Good afternoon. We'll now call the meeting of the Waco City Council May 19th, 2020 to order at 3:00 PM. Joining me online today are Mayor Pro Tem Andrea Bearfield, Councilmember Hector Sabido, Councilmember John Kennard, Councilmember Dylan Meek, and Councilmember Jim Holmes. Please join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. On March 16th, 2020, the governor suspended various provisions of the Open Meetings Act pursuant to his state of disaster authority. The change was effective March 16th, 2020, until further notice or until the state of disaster declaration expires. In accordance with distancing guidelines and while providing as much transparency as possible, this Waco City Council meeting will not be open to the public. This meeting is being broadcast live at WCCC.tv. The audio is also being recorded and video and audio recordings will be available to the public. According to the governor and attorney general, statutes that may require face-to-face interaction between members of the public and public officials are suspended, provided however that the government body offers alternate methods of communication with its public officials. This includes public comment on agenda items. In an effort to allow for as much public comment as possible, those who wish to submit their written comments on a listed agenda item were asked to submit their comments to the city secretary's office by 1:00 PM today. Assistant City Secretary Liz Caraway will read into the record the comments submitted for items on the agenda at the appropriate time. Individuals who registered to speak on a public hearing item will be allowed to speak via conference phone for up to three minutes. We will now recess the regular session and convene the work session with reports from the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Good afternoon to you all. There is one change to the agenda today. That is Resolution 2020-343 that was added by addendum today. Under employee recognition and organizational update, I would like to give a quick update on the cases, the COVID cases today. There are no new cases today. Our total positive count remains at 98. Four of these cases are active, 90 have recovered, and we've had the four deaths. Currently, one case is hospitalized but not in critical condition. We have 29 individuals being actively monitored. As of yesterday, we have had 5,500 total tests administered in McLennan County. Under employee recognition, I would like to recognize Tressa Gamblin, our business support manager here in the city manager's office. She joined us last summer. Just last week, she successfully defended her PhD in organizational development and change from the University of Texas at Tyler Graduate School. And I want to congratulate Tressa, Dr. Tressa Gamblin, on this achievement. And we're really excited for her and her family. And now I'd like to invite Larry Hosey to give the Hosey Report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stem. If you turn your attention to your monitors, you'll be able to see some great pictures that Mark Randolph helped make. The Parks and Recreation Department. We didn't test that part of it, did we?
Let's just go that way.
Ah, there we go.
Sorry.
That's okay. That's all right. Now we got it. Thank you, Liz. All right. The Parks and Recreation Department completed a cost-saving, in-house project of restriping the parking lot at the Hart Patterson Track and Field. City staff in the Waco Mammoth National Monument continued to providing distance learning opportunities while in the park was closed. Park rangers and tour guides have been featured in two Facebook Live showings sharing with the world the treasure we have at Waco's Mammoth National Monument. On May the 11th, the Waco City Cable Channel aired documentaries that they had produced over the years of the 67th anniversary of the 1953 Waco tornado. More than seven hours of personal accounts by survivors and family members along with live radio reports brought back to life the tragedy that killed 114 of our citizens and destroyed much of South Waco, many South Waco homes as well as downtown businesses. Cameron Park Zoo is happy to announce that two of their zoos Ringtail lemurs are proud parents of twin boys born Tuesday, March 24th. Crystal Light, the mom, is 10 years of age, and Dad Agathon is 12 years of age. In keeping with the tradition of naming our lemurs after a candy or a soft drink, the zookeepers chose Mike and Ike as the names for the babies. On Friday, May the 8th, construction crews tore down the old fire training tower on University Parks Drive to make way for the new development along the Brazos. Work to tear down the remaining fire station and maintenance shop buildings began this morning and should be finished later this month. During the shelter-in-place order issued by the mayor on March 23rd, many Waco residents have taken the opportunity to do some brush clearing as well as cleaning out garages and other parts of their homes. Solid waste services had as an increase in calls for bulky items to be picked up, and more residents are putting the allowed sizes of 4x4x4 brush at curbside pickup on our green cart pickup weeks. Residents can also place up to 20 paper, not plastic, yard waste bags with leaves and yard trimmings at curbside to be picked up.
Councilmembers, are you all seeing the screen now?
Are you all seeing the screen at home at your offices now?
Yes.
Now we are, yep.
Okay, good. You want me to go back?
No, it's good.
All right, we'll keep on going. All right, here we are. Here we go. The 2020 census is still underway. In light of the COVID-19 outbreak, the U.S. Census Bureau has adjusted to the 2020 census operations to protect the health and safety of the American public and Census Bureau employees and ensure a complete and accurate count. Filling out the census from far away means that you can avoid knocking, somebody knocking on your door later on by a census taker whose job is to count everyone in person. On Friday, May the 8th, the Texas National Guard held two drive-through coronavirus testing events, one at the Waco Fire Station number five on Bagby Avenue and the other at the Bell Media Civic Center. 226 total tests were given, with 206 given to McLennan County residents. The deadline to sign up to serve on the Waco Youth Council is coming up on May the 29th. Waco youth entering the ninth through the 12th grades are eligible to serve on this imparted advisory board. Somewhere or another, we're not moving forward again. Sorry about that. We're still on the COVID deal. Just go ahead and move it forward if you can.
Advance them as if you can.
It's not advancing.
Okay. Back to the youth council. Information and registration forms are available on the city's website at waco-texas.com, and that completes my report. That was a lot of fun.
Yes, it was.
Sorry about the technology. We appreciate the report.
Mayor and council, there are three informal reports today. The first is on the activities and updates from the COVID-19 community work teams. The second is a report on the transfer of station Force Main Project update. And we can try to take any questions that y'all might have on that one.
I'll just, this is Holmes. I'll just mention that that was a, it's a good update there. It's a giant project. I mean, the infrastructure is tremendously huge. A $40 million deal. It's taken us like five years to get to this point. We're kind of at the finish line here now, but the scale of that thing is incredible when you think about, it comes all the way from my district five over into West Waco, West Highway 4, all the way across town, and ends up, the wastewater system ends up there at the, at the main central plant. It's, it's, it's an amazing deal. The volume that goes in there is incredible. So I'm glad that we're to the, looks like we're to the very end of that, that project. It'll be good to get that wrapped up. Good report.
Thank you, council member. The third informal report, it has to do with the Water Office Interactive Voice Response System. I did find out that although in the report it said that we were going live yesterday, they did need to do some additional testing after that report went in Friday. And so I think they're planning on going live now this Thursday. We'll get you an update on that if that changes.
Wiley, I just wanted to say that I'm very excited about this project, Water Connect. I think it's going to make it very feasible and user-friendly for the people to pay their water bills or even just do any research that they want to do on their account. And I know staff has been working on this for quite a while, so I'm just very glad to do this to come to fruition. So thank you so much to everyone who's had a part in making this project come forth. So thank you for that.
I will. I'm sorry. This is Holmes. Yeah, Hector, I agree with Hector on that. It's an efficient system, state-of-the-art, and you can get access to your account, make payments 24/7. I think it's a good time for us to get into that level of technology on dealing with the water bills and keeping track of everything too. So yeah, very good report.
I will echo my fellow council members in saying that when we empower our citizens, we do really give them full control and a more, more personal connectivity and responsibility to our city because we've allowed them the ability to do it themselves and to figure it out. And so that's why things like this, things like Advancing 311, things like having the text system to report things, see how I just threw that futuriness into the conversation right there, that empowers our citizens and allows them to do more for us. And I think, you know, as a city, as workers, you know, it makes their jobs easier when you give more people a say in how this works. So I applaud staff for the efforts in this project.
Thank you, council. There are, under public hearings, there are 23 today, and Clint will go over those items and work sessions. Resolutions, there are 13 today. The first I wanted to highlight is Resolution 2020-328. This authorizes the mayor to file an application accepting funds for the city of Waco from the Coronavirus Relief Fund and the CARES Act. The city of Waco is eligible for $7,662,000. We will receive 1.5 million of that in direct deposit allocation upfront, and the remainder of the eligible funds are available by reimbursement request. The resolution allows us to execute any additional documents related to the application.
Obviously, it's a great program, and I appreciate the work of our Congressman Flores and our senators in Washington for making sure this money gets back to Texas and gets to Waco.
The next resolution I wanted to mention is Resolution 2020-332. This approves a residential tax abatement agreement with Waco Community Development Corporation for a home to be built at 2,500 Flint Avenue.
Hey Wiley, this is Hector. I just want to say, thank you for highlighting this. This just goes to show that when we have great partnerships with organizations like Grassroots, we are making way and trying to do things to provide affordable housing to, for the people of our community. And so I'm very excited, partially because it is in my district. And so I'm very excited to see this also is happening. And so thank you so much for doing this. And of course, thank you to Grassroots for all of the great people there, all of the great work that they do. So thank you for this.
Thank you, council member. Resolutions 333 and 334 have to do with a contract for the replacement of the HVAC system in Chisholm Hall. And we, staff really feels like it's very important to move this project forward and get that system in, replaced so that as we hopefully bring the convention center back online, that won't be an issue for us. The Resolution 334 just allows us to reimburse from a future, from next year's bond sale if we choose to do so.
Um, yeah, no, this, this is absolutely necessary, and I think it makes a lot of sense to go ahead and get this done while the facility is not being used in anticipation of it being full again in hopefully the near future. The one question I had is that the, and I like that we're, 334 will be contemplating refunding the cost out of, because this, this item is being funded by significantly drawing down the reserves of the CBB. And so I'd like to acknowledge that and then be either through the refunding and the bond issue in February or however we need to, to get the reserves back up to where they need to be. I appreciate the contemplation of the refunding and a bond issue next year. I also would like us to take a look in the budget process for instituting a reserve requirement for the CBB at 30%, similar to our other enterprise funds, just to, just to make sure that that, that entity department within our city has the organizational flexibility that is afforded to others.
Thank you, council member.
Yeah, this is Holmes here. I agree that it's, even though it's a big expense, I think it's the right time to do it. The HVAC system there with, particularly in this time where we have a little lull in, in hotel business and convention business. So if we can get it done in the summer before everybody starts coming back, hopefully soon, I think it's, the timing is great. Hey, I want to go back to 329 also. I know we're trying to get, we've got a long agenda here, but just 329, the program that is, the Financial Navigators Program that we're doing through Prostway, I think it's a great program, worth, very worthwhile. And in my business in recovery, business and individual recovery task force, working team, this is going to be a very valuable tool. And again, I know my fellow councilman, John Kennard, was instrumental in getting this program in place. I just want to make sure that he's recognized here that of getting that, this funded and actually getting a very worthwhile business financial product into the community. So thanks, John.
I appreciate that. And I want to thank particularly Prostway Waco and their partnership on this and helping facilitate and get this up and running along with our other community partners implementing this. And you'll be seeing more about this. It intends to be a resource to be able to help our citizens navigate a lot of the new services and help and opportunities that this whole pandemic has kind of engendered amongst our community, making sure that they're, they're getting, they're getting to the right places and having the questions answered in the right way to make sure that they're, all that we have been making available to the community, they know about and they have access to. So it's, you'll be hearing more about this, but it's, it's going to be a good program.
Thank you, Councilmember Holmes, for coming back to this point. And thank you, Councilmember Kennard, for all that you've done in this effort. I look forward to the, the more detailed report because there were, you know, I want to fully understand so I can make sure that, you know, all of our constituency groups know how to utilize this resource properly. So I look forward to hearing more about it.
Absolutely. There'll be more forthcoming in the very near future.
Thank you, council members. Resolution 2020-335, this is of the award of a construction
contract for the construction of Fire Station 6 and a new fire administration building there at the old side of the 25th Street Theater. The total bid award with contingency is $4,840,723. We're really excited about this bid. I think we had a great team working on this bid with Assistant City Manager Holt and Chief Summers, Kelly Holochek in General Services, and Derek Altman, who has really kind of served as the project lead on this. And RBDR did a great job, a local architecture firm did a great job on the plans and the concept that really, I think, sold us all on this project. And we're really, really pleased with these bids. In the bids, we're also, in the recommendation, we're including two of the alternates. One is a walkway canopy between the buildings, between the fire station itself and the administration building, and a rooftop solar panel system for the administration building. The rooftop solar is important to us because we do need a good solar project on a facility to evaluate. This is an $89,000 add to the project. We feel like it's well worth that so that we could get a sense of the value that potential solar projects can bring to some of our facilities. And we're excited to bring this one forward to you, council members.
Yeah, I think this, Holmes, great project, great neighborhood. My nine-year-old son, Kennedy, goes to school in this neighborhood, and it is in, you know, parts that are in need is some revitalization. And it's going to be so cool to see the project, and I'm sure Dylan will talk about it here too, but 25th Street has a lot of heritage in there and a lot of, the design is so cool. We're preserving part of that and excited to see that moving. And the, the test case on the solar panels, I thought was a nice touch too. It's, it's 80 some thousand dollars and supposedly going to hopefully cover almost half of the electricity costs there. So it'll be interesting to see if that works, how it works, and how we can possibly apply that technology to other city buildings in the future. But this is a great project coming to fruition.
I'm excited about this project, like you said, council member, for several reasons. First is public safety. It's a strategically located fire station in the core of our city, and it's going to be a step towards maintaining our ISO 1 rating, which I think is so important. Public safety is important. That ISO rating is great. It keeps our insurance premiums low. And I think the construction of this facility where it is is going to make sure that that is preserved. Second, again, like Jim said, it's at the intersection of three neighborhood associations, and I love that we are honoring a historic building that I wish we could have saved. I think we all wish that could have been saved, but know that that, that, the building was too far gone. So we're honoring the legacy of that theater, the historical look of that building and facility. And I love that it's at the intersection of Burke View, Sanger Heights, and Dean Highland Neighborhood Associations, and we'll have a space for those groups to meet. I think it's going to be great. I think the possibilities of how this space can be used beyond the fire station are endless, and it's going to be a beautiful asset. That neighborhood has continued potential and a bright future. And a capital improvement project like this is a significant step towards the future being realized. And so I'm excited. I know the neighbors, the businesses in that business district are thrilled for what's ahead. And I look forward to continuing to work with that group of people, that, that business district, to ensure that the business, that, that area continues to thrive. So I want to say how much I appreciate our city staff for being creative on this. There's a lot, there are easier ways to go about building a fire station. And Wiley, you did an excellent job at rolling up your sleeves and saying, how are we going to make this work? And we do have an excellent team on the city staff that came together to see this realized. And I just, I think that this is a best-case scenario, and I'm very thankful.
This is Hector. Also, Wiley, quick question. This is coming in under budget where we anticipated the cost to be correct?
Yes, sir.
So even in addition, I definitely want to echo what Councilmember Holmes and Councilmember Meek said, but on top of that, for us to come in under budget on such a wonderful facility that it also is going to have environmental-friendly aspect to it, I think just speaks volumes of the tenacity and the work that staff has put in. And so thank you so much to you and your staff for just your diligence on this. I'm very excited about this fire station being opened, the location that it's at, the use that we will get out of it. And as you mentioned earlier, Wiley, in your comments, that we can even determine how we can move forward with more environmental-friendly components to our city buildings as we move forward with them. And so thank you so much for this.
Thank you, council members. The next item is, that I wanted to touch on is item Resolution 2020-336. This is a purchase and sale agreement on 28.245 acres located in Cameron Park for a total sales price of $750,000, with $12,000 for closing costs and other expenditures related to the purchase. And we're really excited to bring this forward to the council today because this, this is a piece of property that has great recreational potential for our community, and we're really fortunate to have an opportunity to acquire it. So we would like to recommend this to the council and appreciate your consideration.
Yeah, this is Holmes here. Holmes here, I'm sorry if I interrupted. The 28 acres, I think is a great purchase. It's adding to public space. It's Cameron Park, you know, it's got a great history. It's beautiful, safe, fun. I think we're seeing a lot of use out of it right now in the, in our COVID situation. A lot of folks are going over there to relax and exercise and have fun. So I think the, kind of the infrastructure is already in place over there, and that 28 acres will complement the park well. And I'm excited about getting this piece of property to the city.
I wanted to thank staff for making this happen. This is a wonderful asset that we acquire in District One and, and kind of completes that section of the park because, you know, you have parks surrounding all but this property, and now to acquire it, it just adds another layer of what we can do in that space. It's an incredible asset to the district. It also, the negotiations for that were incredible, were very well done. I know the appraisal will just continue to grow and grow and grow. So I'm glad that we got it at this time.
The last resolution I wanted to highlight is Resolution 2020-339. This is a contract with the United States Army Corps of Engineers for a feasibility study and assessment on a portion of the west bank of the Brazos River there where our WMR's central wastewater treatment plan is. I think in the past, we showed the council the erosion that has been occurring right in there. About 20 years ago, we made some repairs there. We need to make some more now to salvage that bank right there along the Brazos. And we're really excited to be working with the Corps on a 50/50 cost share on the study and then potentially a 65/35 cost share with the federal government picking up 65% on the actual repair itself. And just another one of the great opportunities we have to partner with the United States Army Corps of Engineers. So we're really excited to bring this forward to the council also.
I wanted to, this is Holmes again. I just wanted to go back to, did somebody else have a comment on that 330?
No, I didn't have a comment on 339. I just wanted to go back to 337, but go for it, sir.
Yeah, see, I was going to go 337 too. Hector, I'll say my stuff first. You said the intelligent stuff when I'm done. The, this is, again, the bidding on all of this, all, every resolution we have, the type of bids and the number of bids and the, I guess, whenever you have a bid out, you like it to be very close and very low. This one also, as the number of these, five or six of them that reflected bids are very good. So that's great for the city. I just wanted to clarify on this, the short paragraph in the agenda made one, led one to believe that it's a $2 million, and I got this from a couple of citizens, $2 million for the Texas Ranger-Hall of Fame parking lot. And I'm sure Byron Johnson would be very happy to have a $2 million parking lot there. This is actually for Rhodes, Lyle, Herring, Trice, Woodard Acres, and Colored. It's for Mill and Overlay on, on those streets as well as, as well as some work on the parking lot there at the Hall of Fame. But anyway, again, my point was about the good bids and also just to clarify that particular resolution for a lot of projects. Go ahead, Hector.
Ditto. You said exactly what I wanted to say. So thank you for that.
I guess, right.
Yeah, we appreciate that, council members. And that's, that's the component that is the Ranger-Hall of Fame parking lot is Tiff-funded, and so we're, the other street projects are all coming straight out of the street fund. But I appreciate those comments. There are three ordinances today. The first ordinance, Ordinance 2020-340 is a first reading. It amends a portion of our flood prevention and protection ordinance to allow us to use the most current data available for permitting and development. And we do have a work session scheduled on this today if we can get to it, and there would be more information there. And the remaining two ordinances are second readings. And unless you have any questions or have any other discussion items you wish me to cover, that concludes my report.
Yeah, real quick, just in the event that we don't get to the work session item on the, on the flood changes. Sorry, I don't have it right in front of me, but I know it says that, let's see, from newer documented and approved flood studies, who is document, what's, who's, who's approving, which flood studies will we use and who's going to have approved them? I just wanted, I just want to know kind of what sources we contemplate getting to provide this new information as we're evaluating.
Okay, well, we've done our stormwater study, which is being completed by Walker Partners, and then we partnered along with the county with the Corps of Engineers on a updated, they call it a pass, study on the Brazos that updated all the numbers on the Brazos. And those, those, the data from each of those studies is being combined to provide us more up-to-date data for flood control. And then there will be a, I think, a letter of map revision done around that, which will be the basis for the evaluation of future development.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council or comments? Okay, are there any items council would like to remove from the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, we have received comments on Resolutions 2020-335 and 2020-337, so they will be pulled from the agenda. Therefore, the consent agenda will include Resolutions 2020-327 through 2020-339 with the exception of Resolution 2020-335 and 2020-337. And I will now turn it back to Wiley for the next work session presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have Clint here to review and discuss the planning public hearing agenda items. Clint?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We do have the 23 public hearings.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. We do have the 23 public hearings. Where's the PowerPoint?
Keep going.
There we go. Uh, the first one is our subdivision plats. We do have two plats. The first is the Landreth Gardens Edition Phase One. Uh, this is part of a, uh, PUD on Chapel Road in between, uh, Western Ridge, single-family neighborhood, and the, uh, flats at Chapel, uh, Road Apartments. Uh, this is 30 lots on a little over four and a half acres, all, uh, single-family residential. Uh, there is, uh, the final PUD plan that's associated with this. We'll be discussing, uh, Public Hearing 311. Uh, this does include the plat and the construction plans for Phase One, and, uh, Plan Commission recommends approval of both of those. Uh, this is the preliminary plat. Um, you can see, uh, the, the bottom of the page is the Chapel Road entry, and the first 30 lots is the Phase One. And then this, this is shows the Phase One. Uh, the next, uh, plat is South Fork Edition Phase 11. Uh, this is another single-family residential development on, uh, Loop 340 in Orchard, uh, in East Waco, uh, about 10 and a half acre phase with 56, uh, single-family residential lots. Uh, the construction plans on this, uh, plat have already been approved, uh, and now they're coming back through with their, their plat. And Plan Commission recommended approval of this one as well. Uh, we do have five, uh, special permits for short-term rentals. They're all, uh, SDR 2s. Uh, the first one is at 937 Longfellow Drive. Uh, this is a, uh, little pocket neighborhood just off Valley Mills Drive, uh, South Valley Mills Drive in the Richland Hills neighborhood. Uh, it is a, uh, single-family house. You can see there's commercial zoning that backs up to it and office zoning adjacent to it. It's just, uh, three houses off of Valley Mills Drive, which is, uh, major commercial corridor. Uh, four-bedroom, single-family house. Uh, they do have, uh, parking, uh, two-car garage, and then parking spaces for four cars, uh, in, in the driveway. And we did mail, uh, 22 notices on this one and had one card in opposition. Uh, Plan Commission recommended approval of this one. Uh, the next one, 306, uh, is another SDR 2. This is at, uh, Fort Avenue between, uh, 36th and 37th Street, just north of, uh, Waco Drive and the, uh, Brookview Neighborhood Association. Lost. There we go. Uh, you can see it just a couple of blocks north of Waco Drive. Uh, it is single-family zoning. Uh, this house was, uh, recently renovated. They're still, uh, finishing, finishing it up. Uh, two-bedroom home. Um, they do have a local management company. Now, I'm sorry, this is a three-bedroom home. Uh, we'll rent out the whole, uh, home. Uh, we did get, uh, uh, two, um, cards in opposition, uh, on this one, and one card, uh, in support, uh, with a 200-foot notice. Uh, both of the oppositions are adjacent homes on either side of the home that's being, uh, requested for the SDR. Uh, Plan Commission did, uh, recommend approval, eight to two, on this one.
Hey Clint, this is Hector. I was reading through, um, the, the packet on this. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, there was, uh, a concern from a neighbor about water coming out of the driveway. Is it this one?
Y- yes, we did get, uh, uh, I believe there was a, a letter provided to y'all, but, uh, one of the, uh, neighbors that, uh, opposed it had concerns about, uh, drainage in the area.
Right.
Uh, we, thi, this house was re, recently renovated. They did not do anything, uh, to the drainage. They didn't add any impervious cover, uh, to the site. Uh, so the drainage did not get impacted in one way or the other, uh, by this request. Uh, I will say-
I'm just, I'm just curious if, if the drainage has been there all along, or has something happened, um, with the remodeling that has caused it? Not saying that they worked on the drainage, but maybe just some work that caused it. And so, uh, just curious about the neighbor's concern there.
My, my understanding, it's been an ongoing, uh, situation with the drainage. And, uh, this is in the, the Waco Creek watershed, uh, and I believe is addressed in our stormwater management, uh, master plan that, uh, you'll see work session on, uh, in that area. That watershed has, has been, there's been some issues with that watershed.
Okay.
Uh, Clint, this is Holmes. Um, did the two neighbors, uh, who, uh, opposed this, did that, did, did just those two, the very latest information you have, trigger the, uh, the, uh, the standard, the 20% 200-foot standard?
No, sir. It, uh, it got close. It's about 14 and a half percent, so it's, it's just under the 20%.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, the next one is, uh, 1201 Laporte Drive. Uh, this is, uh, another SDR 2, an R1B zoning. Uh, this is, uh, the neighborhood south of Boski, in between Boski and Tennyson, uh, Drive, uh, near, uh, Tennyson Middle School. Uh, single-family zoning. Uh, this is another one that's been recently renovated, uh, the two-bedroom home. Uh, we did, uh, mail out 35 notices on this and had three returned, uh, with, uh, two opposed, one of those coming after the Plan Commission meeting, and then one with no comment. Uh, Plan Commission recommended approval of that one as well. Uh, the next one, 308, is, uh, 3920 Windsor Avenue. Uh, this is in the Heart of Texas Neighborhood Association off of Windsor and 39th, uh, near the intersection of Cobbs and New, New Grove, uh, another two-bedroom home. Uh, no opposition on this one out of 34 notices, and, uh, Plan Commission recommended approval of that one as well. And then the, uh, the last SDR is, uh, one at the 3829 Herwall Avenue. Uh, this is in the Castle Crest, uh, addition of, uh, Austin Avenue Neighborhood Association, just, uh, south of, uh, Waco Drive, uh, two-bedroom home that was recently, uh, renovated. Uh, the owner does live out of state and will have a local, local, uh, family member manage it. Uh, we did get quite a bit of opposition on this one, uh, that tri, did trigger the 20%. Uh, and, uh, the, also the Plan Commission recommended disapproval of this one, so, uh, it would require a supermajority for approval. Uh, we did also receive, uh, late yesterday, a, uh, petition, uh, from, from, uh, the neighborhood and opposition as well. Uh, the next case, 310, is a special permit for a retail bakery in O2, uh, O3 zoning. Uh, this is a vacant lot, uh, at the corner, northeast corner of North, uh, 19th Street and Rock Creek Road, uh, in the Boskiville area. Uh, this is, uh, new construction, uh, will be a, uh, retail bakery, and then a, a small, uh, apartment on the second floor of the bakery, which, uh, is allowed, uh, by right in O3. Uh, you see here the site plan. Um, they currently have a, a bakery, uh, across, uh, North 19th, and they're wanting to upgrade to a new facility, and they also have the, the, the residential component of it. Uh, no opposition on this one, and Plan Commission recommended approval. Uh, the next public hearing, 311, is the final PUD plan associated with the plat for Landreth Gardens Edition. Uh, like I said earlier, it's, uh, 30 lots, uh, uh, off of Chapel Road between Western Ridge and the Flats of Chapel Apartments. Uh, we did mail out 27 notices on this, and we just got one back, uh, in favor. Uh, this is, uh, the low-density part of the development, single-family lots. It's actually a little, uh, lower density than what was proposed with the concept plan. Uh, the lots are a little, uh, larger in size. Uh, the, the PUD plan does have amenities for sidewalks, uh, common area. There will be an HOA, and then architectural controls, uh, with, uh, facade variation requirements, and some masonry requirements as well. And you can see some of the, the examples of what the, the homes will look like. And, uh, Plan Commission, uh, did recommend approval of that one with the two conditions, which are, are plating and our, uh, site, uh, permit requirements.
Hey Clint, just making sure, the, uh, the, the rest of this PUD for the triangle part and all that, that's still, uh, we still need to look at that again, right, for final approval?
Correct. You'll, you'll see, um, a, as they build out, you'll see each phase. We'll have to come through a final PUD process.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, this, uh, yeah, this is Holmes. I had the same question as John on that, because page 201 shows final PUD application with the whole triangle and everything. And then you, you did present that in the earlier plating deal. But all we're looking at today is the, is the piece that fronts on Chapel, correct?
That's, that's correct. Yeah, that, the, 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 uh, concept plan and then the preliminary plat was for the full acreage, that big triangle area. But the, uh, the final plat and the final PUD are just for Phase One. And you'll see each additional phase as they come in. We'll have to come through approval process.
Okay, great. There exists, there was a lot of issues with the neighborhood on that one, the density and access and layout. It's kind of an odd-shaped piece, but, uh, Mr. Landreth did a great job in figuring, and listening to the neighbors on this thing, uh, actually incorporating their, uh, their, uh, vision for what this should look like. And I think this, uh, looks good. Thanks.
Uh, public hearing 312 is, is an ordinance change. Uh, this is actually, uh, something that's recommended in our comprehensive plan, um, that, uh, talks about, uh, not, uh, or eliminating C3 and C5 zoning, which is our, uh, standard commercial zoning along our major corridors, uh, and, and not using that zoning moving forward. So, um, in order to do that, it recommends that some of the uses that are allowed in C3 and C5 that are not currently allowed in C2 be added as a, a special use in C2 zoning. And one of those is, uh, automobile servicing establishments. This will be our, uh, you know, car inspections, oil change, quick lube type uses, uh, adding this to, uh, a special permit use in C2. Uh, we've done this on some other uses, uh, self-storage warehouse and car washes in C2, where we've allowed them by special permit. And that gives, uh, the city, uh, council, Plan Commission, staff, opportunity to review, uh, their plans and make sure their quality, uh, and, and a higher, uh, level of development standards for those types of uses. Uh, and then Plan Commission did recommend approval of that zone change, or that, uh, ordinance change.
Is, I'm, I'm fine with this. Is there any benefit, uh, since we know that C3 and 5 are going away, just, uh, go ahead and do them all in one fell swoop, instead of just kind of trickling them out one at a time?
Y- yes, and, uh, that, that was, uh, you know, we're working with our consultant, um, rewriting the ordinance, and we'll do that once we get that overall ordinance. We just, uh, have had some requests by some, uh, prop, uh, property owners that develop properties, so that's why we're bringing this to you ahead of that.
Okay.
Uh, the next public hearing, uh, 313, is a, uh, zone change from C3 to O2 at the properties 714 through 718 South 11th Street. Uh, this is, uh, about an acre of land, uh, at the corner of Ross and South 11th, uh, in the area between downtown and, uh, I-35 and our downtown neighborhood association. Uh, this area has been tran, transitioning, uh, to, uh, commercial uses, to more mixed uses, and they are requesting O2, uh, which is a mixed-use office residential use. Uh, this, uh, zoning is associated with, uh, a low-income housing tax credit, uh, application that the council approved the resolution of support, uh, back in February. Uh, the property is made up of some vacant, uh, lots and a, uh, a single-family residence that's vacant. Uh, there is a, a mix of commercial, commercial and, uh, residential uses around the area. Uh, Plan Commission did recommend approval of that, and there was no opposition to that one. Uh, the next one, 314, is, uh, 2324 and 2326 Washington Avenue, uh, rezoning from C2 to O3. Uh, these are two, uh, s, single-family residential homes, existing, single-family residential homes at the corner of Washington and, uh, 24th Street, uh, in Austin Avenue Neighborhood Association. Uh, this is in that, uh, mixed-use transition area between downtown and the, uh, single-family residential neighborhoods in Austin Avenue Neighborhood Association. Uh, the, uh, the owner would like to rezone these, uh, to get the, the existing homes into conformance with the zoning ordinance. Uh, C2 does not allow, uh, low-density residential, where the O3 does allow, uh, a mix of, uh, single-family residences, office, limited commercial, so it is more of a, a mixed-use zoning. Uh, no opposition on this one, and, uh, Plan Commission like, recommended approval of it. Uh, the next one, 315, is a similar situation, uh, actually right down the street at, uh, 2011 Washington Avenue. Uh, another request, uh, from C2 zoning down to O2, which is more of a mixed, uh, use zoning district. Uh, again, another single-family home, existing single-family home that they would like to have use for mixed of uses. Uh, there is O2 zoning adjacent to it as well. Uh, no opposition on this one, and Plan Commission recommended approval of it too. Uh, 316 is, uh, 2428, uh, South 3rd Street.
Hey Clint, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Real quick, can we go back to 316? Did you say Plan Commission did vote for approval on this one?
On, uh, 315-
Public hearing, 316.
Oh, 316, we're, we're about to go over, but they recommended disapproval.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought you were on, I'm sorry, I got ahead. Sorry about that.
Trying to go fast, but you headed me a little bit.
Sorry.
Yeah. Uh, so, yeah, 316 is, uh, a land use change from medium-density residential office flex, uh, to mixed-use flex, and the rezone from R1B to O2. Uh, this is a half-acre, uh, lot, uh, south of LaSalle, between, uh, South 2nd and South 3rd Street. Uh, it actually has, uh, two homes on it, uh, one that faces South 2nd and one that's facing South 3rd. Uh, this is in that area that's been transitioning, uh, to student housing over, uh, the last 10 to 15 years. Uh, but this area in particular, uh, even though it is student housing, it is, it is low-density. Most of the, the houses, most of the housing around there are, are, uh, single-family residential homes adjacent to it. You can see the, the medium-density residential land use, and then you can see the zoning, the single-family zoning that's in that block. And then some of the green is, is multifamily, but it's, uh, R3B, which is low-density multifamily. Uh, they are requesting O2, which is a, a high, higher-density, uh, zoning, uh, that allows up to the 40 units an acre. Uh, and you can see there is O2 in the area, but it's, it's mainly, uh, been north of LaSalle or along university parks where you have, uh, the infrastructure to, um, handle that type of density. Uh, another thing we looked at, this is in the college and university neighborhood, uh, district, uh, and, and it's in that Zone 2 area. Uh, Zone 1 is the area right around campus. Uh, this is the area that, uh, we are promoting higher density, uh, right around campus where it's more walkable and has standards for that. And then as you can, uh, Zone 2 is more of a, a medium-density, and then as you get further out, Zone 3 is a, a lower density. So that Zone 2 is more geared towards, uh, medium or low-density residential, uh, which is, uh, the request is not in, in line with. Here's a picture of the property, um, from South 3rd Street, and you can see, um, the, the single-family house is adjacent to it. Uh, Plan Commission did, uh, recommend, uh, disapproval of this one. Uh, we did get, uh, one card, uh, back in opposition, and, uh, with the Plan Commission recommend, recommendation, it would take a, uh, supermajority, uh, for the council to approve it. Uh, the next case is from the same applicant, uh, but the different property. This is further down, uh, in that area, 3212, uh, South 4th Street. Uh, this is, uh, another, uh, this is a vacant property, uh, a little over acre on South 4th, and it, uh, south of Garden. And when you get, start getting that, that far south, it really gets, uh, low-intensity residential, more rural in nature. Uh, it's all, um, urban residential land use and, um, single-family zoning along that stretch. And then you can see, there, this is actually in Zone 3, which is, uh, intended for low-density development. Uh, then you see the, the pictures on this one, vacant property, and some of the surrounding homes on that. And, uh, Plan Commission recommended disapproval of that one as well. Uh, we did get, uh, two cards back and an email back, and this will require a supermajority as well. Uh, then the next one, uh, 318 is a rezoning, uh- The next one, 318, is a rezoning of a property at the corner of Webster and 18th Street from M3 to C2. M3 is our heaviest industrial zoning. This is a property, developed property at the near the corner of Webster and 18th Street. There is industrial zoning along there, but it has been transitioning more to commercial over the last 10, 15 years. 17th and 18th are commercial corridors. And you can see the building here. No opposition on that one, and plan commission recommended approval of it. The next, 319, is a rezoning from O2 to C2 at 922 Cleveland Avenue, about 1.3 acres. This is in that area between Cleveland and the interstate, south of downtown. This area has been going towards commercial. You can see all that pink area between Cleveland and I-35. That's all C2 zoning. That's been rezoned probably in the last five to 10 years to C2 away from O2. You see it's a vacant property just adjacent to the two new hotels that are being built, LaQuinta and Aloft Hotels. No opposition on this, and plan commission recommended approval of it. 320 is a change, a proposed change from C2 to R2 on 1900 North 17th Street. This is a vacant lot at the corner of 19th or 17th and Cumberland Avenue. The land use plan calls for it to be medium-density office residential flex and it's C2 zoning, but it, when we started looking at this closer, that whole block is made up of single-family residential uses. And so it made sense to rezone this from R2 and and really, you know, it's our opinion that we probably need to go back and look at changing the rest of that block at some point because it is more of a residential area. I think this is a holdover of when we had cumulative zoning where you could do residential uses in commercial districts, and I think this area is more suited for residential We did get some opposition. One of the commercial business owners, property owners along 18th Street was opposed to it for some reason, but that's the only opposition that we got on this case. And then the last zoning change that we have is a, the Texas metering device building complex at H Street between Mary and Jackson. This is currently M2. That that whole area used to be industrial zoning, has been transitioning to a commercial mixed-use, downtown mixed-use zoning, as that area has been redeveloped for more entertainment uses. This is across Jackson from the silos. No opposition on that one, and plan commission recommended approval of it. We do have two abandonments associated with downtown development. The first one is abandonment of an alley. This is associated with the Marriott AC Hotel Development, where they are developing that site between Jackson and Mary in the abandoned 7th Street and 6th Street. They are wanting to abandon this alley to incorporate into their development, which includes the vacant lot and then the old Olmsted Kirk Building. They are, there are some utilities in that alley they'll have to relocate as part of this abandonment condition, and no opposition on this one. And then the other development is the abandonment of a easement, drainage and utility easement. This one's associated with the Embassy Suites development on South 2nd, South 3rd, kind of similar situation. They'll need to relocate all the utilities before, as a condition of the abandonment. The next two public hearings, 324 and 325, are voluntary annexation requests from Waco Industrial Foundations on two industrial properties out in the industrial district, one being at the end of Mars and Jewel Drive. This is an annexation associated with the American Engineering Manufacturing Headquarters complex. They are requesting general industrial land use and M2 zoning. And then the other is another Waco Industrial Foundation property that they're working on, industrial development along Exchange. It's about 97 acres, 93 acres, I'm sorry. Again, general industrial land use designation and M2 zoning. Both of these are contiguous to our existing city limits and have existing city services already in place for them, and the plan commission recommended approval of this. At our next council meeting, we will be bringing you resolutions on both of these for service plan agreement with Waco Industrial Foundation laying out the service, services for both of these sites included in the annexation. And then the last public hearing is a, some street name changes. This is a unique situation. These are actually, this is in South Waco. These are actually platted lots that were platted back in the 60s, but the the streets were never built and, but they were named, Benton Avenue and Garrett Avenue. And we have a local developer, the Maury Homes, that has bought these, and they're going to build the infrastructure and build a single-family neighborhood here, but want to have different street names that are more fitting with the the marketing for the subdivision. So they're requesting it be Caspian Meadow Drive and Pony Run Avenue. Again, neither one of these streets exists, and they don't, they're they're one-block streets, and so there's not any issues with addressing on these. So plan commission and staff both recommended both of these as well. And that is all the public hearings.
Any questions from council? It was on mute.
I was hoping you all heard me.
Yeah. All right. Thank you very much, Clint. Appreciate the presentation. A lot of, lot of hard work there. Thank you.
Our next work session presentation will ask Deputy City Manager Bradley.
Forward to introduce this item.
Thanks, Wiley. Mayor and Council, this is a discussion of the proposal from Turner Behringer Development LLC for the site formerly known as the Floyd Casey Stadium property. We're excited to bring you an update. We intended for this presentation to take place in March at the meeting in which council approved a resolution authorizing the manager to negotiate a development agreement with Turner Behringer, but as you might recall, we were in the midst of the beginning of the COVID-19 outbreak and thought it best not to have folks in the room. And so here we are today. We're joined Kent George, our Economic Development Program Manager. He's going to kick us off, and then also joining us, I believe, is Sarah Roberts on behalf of Turner Behringer Development Group. Kent?
Good afternoon, honorable Mayor and City Council. Today I'd like to continue the discussion concerning the RFP for the Floyd Casey property. This RFP was issued August 1st, 2019, with responses due on November 22nd, 2019. At that time, we received four responses. After review and scoring, staff recommended entering into a development agreement with Turner Behringer LLC. As you may recall, March 17th, City Council approved a resolution selecting the Turner Behringer proposal and authorized the negotiation of a development agreement. Unfortunately, on the 17th, staff and Turner Behringer group were unable to provide a presentation due to the pandemic. Today, we would like to bring you that presentation from the group that submitted the winning proposal. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Sarah Roberts and the team from Turner Behringer.
Thank you, Kent. I think Esmeralda is pulling up our project deck. Great. You can advance to the next slide. Well, Mayor and Council, thank you. We are honored to have been selected for the Floyd Casey project. We see a lot of familiar faces on this screen, but we certainly don't want familiarity to drive our discussion. Instead, we really hope that this presentation will help reinforce the reason you selected our team based on qualifications, experience, and the thoughtful way that we've approached Floyd Casey. So this is our team on the screen, and we believe we've brought together a partnership that is unparalleled in real estate capacity, financial capacity, local knowledge, as well as relationships, and a proven track record. All of us share a passion in reenergizing the heart of Waco, and we're each innovators in our respective fields and are excited by the challenge of bringing something new to Waco once again. Esmeralda, you can go to the next. To advise our team, our local team, we sought out the best of the best, and we would like to introduce you to them now. Jim Adams is president of McCann Adams Studios. His master's is in architecture and urban design from Harvard. Jim's put that knowledge to work specializing in major infill redevelopment projects, but most importantly, in the reintegration of those projects into their surrounding communities. Having served as the master plan architect at Cattellus throughout the implementation of the Miller Airport redevelopment project, Jim also has a unique vantage point of being an architect and a planner that makes sure that the pretty picture on the page is successfully built out over the lifetime of the development. Rick Rosenberg, who's joined us on the call, is managing principal for DPFG's Texas region. His work is with our team is to deliver the financial tools so that we can all bring this vision to reality. DPFG speaks to make the complex simple and practical, and Rick has worked in the finance field for more than 39 years in very diverse roles, from CFO, an operating role with real estate firms, and as a consultant and advisor to Fortune 500 companies, institutional investors, foundations, endowments, developers, and the public sector. And we think his unique range of experience will help him to bring tools to the table that can work for all parties. Our local team is also made up of engineers and legal counsel that have unique local knowledge about the property that we're seeking to redevelop. We are hopeful that our local team will also give us the ability to avoid some of the unknowns that often cost time and money on real estate redevelopment projects. In terms of qualifications, last year, multiple real estate firms merged together under Turner Behringer Holdings. The merger brought a real estate organization together that's now vertically integrated. Today, Turner Behringer is a full-service real estate operation in-house. The team manages subdivision construction, residential lot sales, commercial lot sales, and vertical development of commercial and multifamily projects. In addition, the team has brokerage and property management in-house. With this project specifically, the Floyd Casey redevelopment will be under the Turner Behringer development team, which has specifically developed more than 200,000 square feet of projects in commercial and residential space in downtown Waco, including Tinsley Space, Altra Lofts, the Lofts at Franklin Square, U Parks Village, West Bay, and Union Our team's experience is deep in all of the types of real estate proposed in the Floyd Casey redevelopment. You can go back. I think we're on slide six. Esmeralda? Thanks. The Turner family roots were in homebuilding, having built more than 200 single-family homes in Waco, and they've returned a bit to that heritage recently, completing a residential subdivision project. In downtown and uptown Waco, our team's track record includes more than 600,000 square feet, over $100 million in total development, and representing 22 unique revitalization and adaptive reuse projects. They include a diversity and mix of uses such as Main Street commercial redevelopment, urban lots, multifamily housing, both rental and condo, mixed-use and office renovations. Equally important to the experience in these types of uses is the experience in building these projects in an urban environment, which brings unique challenges, and also the importance of how to phase the mix of uses. Our team's early urban development projects consisted of apartments, condos, and lofts that added approximately 350 new residential units in the downtown Waco area. We know how to build up households in burgeoning markets, and we believe that that tool will be critical in the Floyd Casey project. As the residential population has increased in downtown Waco, our team's focus has shifted to build out on commercial projects and to new urban markets for residential like uptown Waco. And it's with a similar aim in mind that our team is focused on residential first at Floyd Casey. Personally, I'm excited to be partnering with the Turner Behringer team on the Floyd Casey redevelopment. I bring to our team more than a decade of economic development in this area, as well as seven years as a site selector to innovative companies. And in my previous work with the Industrial Foundation here, I also managed all aspects of business park development, including record-breaking errors for new construction and greenfield projects as well as brownfield redevelopment. You can see the pictures of some of the recent projects in downtown. I think, yeah, there we go. And these are all familiar to you guys, but what we hope that you see here when you look at this page is that from the earliest of roots, whether working on bringing mixed-use buildings onto Waco's Main Street more than 15 years ago, or reviving the historic Hippodrome into a vibrant destination for culture and entertainment, or bringing Waco its first food hall at Union Hall in the Franklin Square Development, bringing something new to Waco is what our team does. This next set of pictures, you'll see that in addition to experience in downtown Waco, our team has qualifications that align with all parts of the Floyd Casey redevelopment. In West Bay, Turner Behringer recently completed construction of its first ground-up development of approximately 30,000 square feet, which followed the completion of another 34,000 square feet that transformed industrial space into retail and restaurant-anchored commercial development at U Parks. Turner Behringer also recently brought on new housing concepts in uptown Waco, including garden-style apartments in the Madison, Columbus Heights townhomes, and part of the redevelopment team for the Carriage House. And at Moonlight Park, Turner Behringer's developed the 256-lot, single-family residential subdivision, which starts at homes in the 1,800-square-foot range and is working well with local home builders to complete the three-phase project. Our advisors also draw from a depth of experience, and we're excited about the new concepts and tools that they will help us bring to Waco. As a master plan architect at Miller, Jim's designs have helped add over 13,000 jobs and 13,000 residents to a part of Austin that experienced disinvestment for many years. The project includes more than five miles of urban greenways and trails and 140 acres of parks designed to increase walkability and bring transit onsite. And unlike plans for suburban residential developments that are often surrounded by cornfields, Jim's work emphasizes how the design integrates with the surrounding urban area, and this was a part of the reason that we sought out his expertise for Floyd Casey. Rick's work with DPFG will focus on how to efficiently and effectively finance the infrastructure for our development. You can go back to the previous page. That'd be great. And as we've said, his extensive work has given, has been in both residential subdivisions as well as innovative and urban mixed-use projects like the Assembly Yards in Atlanta. The visual above gives you an example of the goal of the tools that Rick can help us bring to the table, which is to find funding solutions for infrastructure that genuinely can transform the look and feel of a community, and his experience will help us integrate into Floyd Casey, the urban principles that were envisioned in the Imagine Waco plan. Rick doesn't focus on a single solution. Instead, he will help us to explore options to find a tool that's the best fit for all of our parties. Our references reflect our strong local roots. Turner Behringer Real Estate, the brokerage part of the team, has helped local favorites like the Castillo family launch new concepts in new parts of town and supported the expansion of social enterprises like Unshakable and businesses that encourage people to get active on the river trails such as Bicycle World and Waco Running Company. And in many ways, projects like Union Hall serve to incubate our local entrepreneurs here in Waco. And as Russ Davis can attest and others, our team has a strong track record with local home builders that are currently working on the build-out of the three-phase Moonlight Park subdivision. And as you drive by many of the projects that we just talked about, you can see, and Fiona with Creative Waco, far more eloquent than we than me, has said that we've shown that we believe in incorporating public art and culture into development as part of making unique places that give people a reason to come downtown, an extra reason that we hope to also incorporate at Floyd Casey in the in the future. And as part of the team, my work brings deep corporate roots in Waco, and references like Lauren Dryer with SpaceX speak to my ability to help our team understand the needs of job-creating companies and especially those in innovative fields. Our reference with Alliance Bank, in addition to making many of these projects possible as a commercial lender, is also the leading, one of the leading community banks in CRA lending to low and moderate-income individuals in Waco, and has created innovative tools to help those without credit without credit get bank loans and build future credits for financial stability, a unique opportunity, we think, to reduce barriers and make the mixed-income vision we have for Floyd Casey a success. So we're excited to put that experience and those qualifications to work on something new in our hometown, and now let's talk about the project. Transformation, vibrant, healthy, diverse, sustainable, walkable community, these are the words that inspired our work at Floyd Casey. Our vision is that this redevelopment will have a generational impact. This project is unique and is not available in Waco. More than 560 single-family permits were pulled for new construction, new single-family homes just last year in Waco, yet MLS reported less than 20 of those new homes were sold in WacoIC over the same time period. We hope to bridge that gap. Our conceptual plan proposes a mixed density, mixed-income neighborhood, and has new models of urban residential that would offer a diversity of housing and community in the heart of our city. We've incorporated innovative walkable housing designs, specifically including pockets of cottages, connected brownstones, zero-lot townhomes, as well as landmark homes gathered on shared open space. We have mixed-use concepts that will facilitate live-work lifestyle and help bring jobs to people onsite and in the surrounding neighborhoods. Local neighborhood-serving commercial is designed to be pedestrian-friendly, to be walkable from all parts of the Floyd Casey neighborhood and the surrounding areas, and to alleviate congestion while also strengthening adjacent commercial corridors on Franklin and other parts of greater downtown Waco. Our conceptual plan is designed around connections. Trails, bike lanes, continuous sidewalks are all designed to maximize view corridors and to draw people to recreate at Waco Creek, Hart Patterson Track, and more than 10 acres of open space that we have incorporated throughout the site. The open spaces have been very intentionally located, as you can see, to make views and trails accessible to all of the surrounding neighborhoods. The conceptual plans also lay the groundwork for those trails to make future off-site trail connections along 29th Street to the South Waco Reg Center, and up 32nd Street to the Mary Avenue Trail, that could have potential linkages long-term to the Mary Avenue Pedestrian Bridge and the East Waco River Walk. From a design standpoint, the preliminary site concept seeks to incorporate the feel of some of Waco's historic and urban neighborhoods that embody the early 20th century city beautiful movement. With curved street interiors and connections to a grid pattern on the perimeter, the street grid configuration also promotes pedestrian linkages to the surrounding areas and balances a need for vehicular connectivity. This nod to city beautiful design also preserves and enhances the natural curve of the beautiful and limestone-bed Waco Creek. Our proposed trail system and open space is designed to feature the creek and to draw people to connect in the community to the site's most iconic and natural feature. We can go to the next slide. So we envision this to be our community's next-generation historic neighborhood, a healthy, sustainable community with more than 7,200 feet of trails and 10 acres of open space, a place where people gather for recreation that promotes wellness, a place where homes are designed to relate to sidewalks and to open spaces to promote community engagement. We envision a walkable neighborhood, commercial district, that doesn't compete but rather strengthens the surrounding commercial corridors along Franklin Avenue and in downtown Waco. We want this to be an attractive location for a diverse cross-section of our households, as well as our businesses, and to offer a place for people to call home in the heart of Waco. We have brought to the table innovative designs that are envisioned in all of the community plans from Imagine Waco and forward, but with the price considerations of our local homebuyers and homebuilders in mind to ensure that the project can be built successfully. In short, we envision it would be a homecoming for Waco. Last, we want to finish on the project approach. Our project approach is market-based. We like to find polar-looking trends, like food halls or dining movie theaters, and figure out how to bring them to Waco, to bring urban design and deliver it with the Waco homebuilder, homebuyer, and tenant in mind. That is the way we approach the Floyd Casey redevelopment. Above all, this project is a mixed-income, mixed-density concept, so we'd like to look at the housing mix a little more in detail. Our concept plan offers a diversity of lot sizes and housing types, all with quality building materials and architectural variety in mind. The goal is to discourage redundancy and to encourage the diversity of community that characterizes traditional neighborhoods. As you can tell from our proposal, we spent an extensive amount of time researching the local single-family market, as well as new out-of-market concepts. We have several classifications of properties. The urban residential and the landmark urban residential lots have been designed as an urban alternative to the single-family product that currently exists in suburban Waco, but built on slightly denser lots and in a location that offers amenities such as trails, open space, and connection to the city center, similar to the traditional neighborhood products that were envisioned in Imagine Waco. Our new single-family residential concepts include connected brownstones, zero-lot townhomes, and cottage concepts, some of which have been built in individual small pockets in Waco but here would be incorporated into a mixed-income environment, and gathered around shared gardens and open spaces. It's our goal that these would increase density and housing diversity, and also that the introduction of these housing types would bring the opportunity for Waco to have innovative and well-designed options for affordability within a mixed-income community. Because office tenants in Waco are typically smaller and not currently paying lease rates that support a significant amount of new for-rent office construction, our initial concepts for office include a mixed-use approach along the Dutton Quarter. Mixed use would balance the lower office rental rate with rental for multifamily rates to achieve the returns required to support new construction. It's our goal that this product would also help attract jobs to the Floyd Casey site, and these buildings could be similar in scale to the Franklin Square project or to live-work studio designs envisioned by McCann Adams. This is very similar to the mixed-use flex type of product envisioned in Imagine Waco. At Willow Bend and Valley Mills, the site includes 7.31 acres that are located in the city of Beverly Hills. Approximately three and a half of those are outside of the floodplain. Our conceptual plans envision a mix of community facilities and gathering spaces that would serve the surrounding community, and provide ample space for public access to the trails and to the creek, while minimizing traffic congestion in the existing Willow Brook neighborhood. Throughout Floyd Casey, we have incorporated more than 10 acres of open space and 7,200 feet of trails, and with a priority on creek-side trails and gathering spaces that can be programmed with public art and community events. In addition, next to the Hart Patterson Track complex, we've also envisioned a site for an all-inclusive park for the city of Waco, mirrored to be the size of the Playground for All concept in Round Rock. From Waco Creek to Dutton, we envision a multi-phase village center that encourages pedestrian-friendly connections to a retail area that serves the neighborhood and surrounding communities. Connections to the trails and open spaces and places for public art would make this a unique place oriented to the creek. As you know, Big Box Anchor Development flanks the Floyd Casey site. HEB is just three-quarters of a mile to the east, Walmart Low's and Academy a mile and a quarter away. And while the Esri analysis showed that Floyd Casey site had some of the highest traffic counts on Valley Mills, lower levels of population and household income have meant that this area has not seen infill development at the rate of other parts of the Valley Mills corridor. These two factors drove our conceptual plan to focus more on locally-oriented retail options that serve the neighborhood and also strengthen these adjacent commercial corridors, as well as informed a phased build-out approach for a village center that would allow for the successful absorption of any new commercial square footage that's built as households grow in the area. While the concept plan totals up to 74,000 square feet of commercial, the initial phase would likely be no more than 30,000 square feet, and this is based on market feasibility and current absorption trends in Waco. At the end of 2019, there was already a growing vacancy in downtown as new products came online, which was detailed in our proposal, and impacts of the current economic realities further drag the importance for a need and a need for a phased commercial build-out. We envision that the village center expansion would occur if housing and employment drive plans for more commercial activity on the site. So I'm not going to do PowerPoint 101 and read you this long slide. Instead, I'll just tell you, we believe in this project. Our advisors are the best of the best. They've helped us think through new designs and new tools that we could use in Waco to help bring this ambitious vision to reality. And our plan is also market-based, and it is validated both by data and by our experience, specifically working in new markets in Waco. Our market feasibility is also in real-time, as our team is building, selling, and leasing all of these types of real estate in Waco today. And this is increasingly important as we move forward in the current economic realities. So we believe in our plan, but most of all, we believe in our team, and that we think it's important to dream big visions for our community and to put those to paper, but we also think that they stay on paper if the team isn't committed to seeing them through. Turner Behringer's been awarded 16, all right, 16 tip projects over the past 15 years and completed over 100% or completed 100%. And as we all know in development, over 100%, extra, no, as we all know, we are always successful on the first try. So for example, with the Hippodrome, when the initial concept wasn't performing as hoped, Turner Behringer did not walk away, but instead invested in new screens, in new dining concepts, to make the Hippodrome a vibrant place in downtown Waco for people to enjoy. Our team has demonstrated the ability to make projects happen and to keep going until we do, and we hope to have the opportunity to work with you all to make something, Floyd Casey, our next something new in Waco. We're excited about this project, and we really look forward to making progress in the next step. I'll turn that back over to Kent to talk about next steps.
Thank you, Sarah.
Moving on to next steps.
Before we move to next steps, let's see if there are any quick questions or comments from council on the presentation. Real quick, I just want to say, Sarah, thank you for a great presentation. Really appreciate the team that Turner Behringer has put together on this. This looks like a very exciting project to me. Are there questions or comments from council?
Hey, Sarah, I'll start off. I want to say thank you so much for the presentation. I have to agree with Mayor Dever. I mean, it was a great presentation, and I have to say I'm very, very excited about this project. You know, growing up across the street from this location, it is very near and dear to my heart, and I have great expectations and great dreams about this location. And in my short tenure in office, my one year at the anniversary that I just completed, and in talking to a lot of the constituents and people that live in the neighborhood, especially the University Neighborhood Association, you know, there's a lot of great expectation and a lot of excitement that's building around this project. And so I'm very excited to see that we can show the people something that we are planning to do. You know, I'm very excited that what I have envisioned for this area, you have embodied it and put it on paper. Any things from the housing, you know, when you said mixed-income, mixed-density, that's one thing that I think I definitely wanted to see in that area, the way the streets are outlined, you know, your place for retail and how you have your restaurants and trails and bike lanes, the all-inclusive park, you know, something also that's very near and dear to me, and I'm sure to a lot of people in our community as well. I even see the baseball field that they're possibly bringing Southern Little League back to the core and the heart of South Waco. I love that you brought up the fact that the jobs that it will create, especially as we, as council, as we move forward with equitable practices and try to make sure that we are hiring MWPEs to work on these houses and work on these subdivisions, I think it's very important to me. And so just to see, we rarely have an opportunity like this where there is so much land in the core of a city that's available and that we can build upon, and that has such easily access to downtown Waco, to Valley Mills Drive, to I-35. And so you and the team over there, Shane and Cody and Todd and everyone else, has just, I know I've been working so hard, and so I just want to say thank you for doing this, and thank you for taking our vision, thank you for taking our concept. I know sometimes we have, all council members have six different visions, and so sometimes it's hard to put that on paper, but I can say you did that very well, and so thank you for doing that, and I'm so excited to see as this project moves forward, even as Kent covers timelines and how we move forward in the next steps. But overall, I was very, very well pleased with your presentation, so thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Sabino. I see that Councilmember Meek is unmuted. Dylan, did you have something to add? No, can't hear you yet. Looks like you're unmuted, but we can't hear you.
Yeah, Dylan, we can't hear you.
Let's let Councilmember Holmes, if he's got something to add, let me figure out what's going on for Dylan's audio.
Dylan, I'm sorry, I'm gonna jump in. All right, yeah, I just, Ms. Roberts, thank you so much for that presentation, very informative, great. Also, Mr. Adams and Mr. Rosenberg, thanks for coming to, joining us here today on this project. It's a hallmark project for the city of Waco. And just to kind of follow on what Councilman Sabino was saying, the greenfield infill at this big of a tract, you know, kind of feeling a dream here that can do a lot of different things. This project that you put forward here today checks a lot of boxes. I mean, it's got the residential elements, and again, mixed-income, mixed-density, which is very important to the council to have a wide range of different kind of housing there. The retail elements, very important, the commercial elements, the open spaces and trails, just again, checks a lot of boxes. Cody, you being a reputable builder here locally, it adds a lot to the, adds a lot to the presentation and the project. There were several interesting projects that we got on the front end of this deal, but this one definitely stood out as it matures here and as we get into it, I'm feeling better and better about the decision we made here. And as Hector said, Shane, Cody, Todd, you've done a lot for downtown Waco and a lot of projects going on, and we can see your track record of success. So we're excited to have Floyd Casey. I was there, I went to a lot of games back in the day and was there the day the press box came down, and just the, as that space became kind of flattened, or it's got a nice contour to it, it's just the dreams kind of started, what can we do with this? And this project or the renderings you have here are kind of the fruition of a lot of folks' vision. So again, appreciate the, taking the first step here, and you've got our support in getting this thing going. Thanks, Sarah, and Shane, and Cody, and Todd, and Mr. Adams, and Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Councilmember Holmes. Let's see if we can get here from Councilmember Meek at this point. Nope. Okay, we'll get your comments another time. We'll have to work that out in the next few minutes. Kent, I'm sorry I interrupted you a while ago. Let's go ahead with the rest of your presentation.
No problem, Mayor. Our next steps, along with incorporating the feedback we've received today, we will schedule a project kickoff meeting in the next few weeks. Both the city and Turner Behringer will work through a development agreement. Additionally, our two teams will develop a project schedule that will include everything for public meetings, council updates, development phasing, and construction. That concludes our presentation. We'd be glad to take any more questions you may have.
Any further questions or comments?
No further questions, Mayor, but I did want to say, as we prepare for the public meetings and just make sure that we're reaching out to the neighborhood associations, especially the University Neighborhood Association, which encompasses Floyd Casey, Kendrick Neighborhood Association, which is right on the border of that area, and so just want to make sure that we incorporate them in the process. That way, we can get their participation and help in getting the word out as well.
Very good, very good.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Oh, great. Can I, is it too late to ask some questions?
I think they're still on.
Sarah, are you there?
Sarah, are you still here?
Yes, we're here.
Okay. Great. Okay, I'll just say ditto what Hector said. Excellent presentation. This is a generational This is a generational opportunity, and I'm very excited for it. I had a couple of quick questions, if that'd be okay. The first is, I loved that slide that was early on in the presentation that distinguished between with a pit and without a pit, and we don't have to go back to that, but I think you probably know which one I'm talking about. And I think that that is, in conversations that this council has had, I think that's the concept we're going for. I think my, my question, and I loved what you said, is, you know, this is Waco's next historic neighborhood. Do you see both the design and the building, like the, the quality of building materials and the design and quality of the houses? And I know quality of the houses is a relative term, but do you see that being, could you speak to that a little bit? And you did a bit in your presentation, but how do you see this being, you know, distinguished from a high-density suburb that we're familiar with, you know, in the suburbs versus having the character and long-lasting quality of something like this?
Sure. I mean, I think you have two components. You have both the groundwork that's laid in building the residential lots and the amenities that are proposed, everything from continuous sidewalks and street lighting and trees, more of an urban spacing, and the trails and open spaces and things of that nature, all of that we have really, part of the reason we brought Rick to the table is to help us figure out a way to feasibly get that constructed and still be at a price point that is, is in line with the market feasibility, but, and also to preserve the maintenance of those things once they're in the ground. You know, the neighborhood needs to, to be able to have a sustainable way to, to continue to keep that character for the lot. In terms of the buildings, you know, many of, many of the things that we talked about in the proposal were just around the importance of guiding the material selection and things of that nature to ensure that the quality is there. You know, part of the experience that this team has is currently working in, in residential subdivisions to know how, how to really incorporate that and do it in a way that is still attractive to the homebuilder and homebuyers, price points that, that have to be hit for our market. So we really, we, we spend a lot of time looking at those options and making sure that we can balance both.
Great. Another question I had is how do you see this connecting to downtown from a connectivity perspective? You know, Frank, I think Franklin is a, is a great connector there. Do you see that street as serving? How do you see this development specifically with traffic flow and otherwise connect to downtown?
Yeah, so that 32nd Street connection that crosses over to Franklin is really enhanced by all the site plans. It also becomes the main anchor for the pedestrian and bike trails to connect to the future Mary Avenue Trail that's proposed. And so we see that as being a really important linkage. We also looked at the Clay Avenue corridor for some of the plans for bike lanes along that. Also, the, the, the primary emphasis, I think, from a residential connection into downtown would be in those directions, whereas Dutton really serves as sort of the commercial and mixed-use entry into the site.
That's good. I think that as the city examines its plans for Franklin outside of your project, or Dutton outside of your project, your input will be valuable as well. So continue to keep us in the loop as you have ideas and thoughts on how we can ensure that those corridors are fully optimized to connect downtown to this development. And if there's things that we can be doing on our end to further optimize that, I, I would love to hear from your team on that. So that's something we can talk about another day, but I, I think it's important that we fully optimize that, that opportunity to connect downtown to this development.
Yeah, absolutely. We share that vision. We obviously didn't get outside of the proposed lot boundaries in the proposal, but we would love to explore that conversation.
You might have mentioned this, and if I missed it, I apologize. Is there an HOA or how will the common area be maintained? Or pit, or what are you thinking?
Our initial analysis looked at a pit structure as one of the tools to have both a, a construction and a maintenance aspect to that. But we are still in the, we are still in the modeling phase to look and make sure there are other tools that would be better fit.
Great. Those are all my questions. Thanks. Excited for this.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Hi, I'm, sorry, before we move on, I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I want to thank you all for your presentation, thank you for your commitment to the city and the things that you do. One of the things that I appreciate most about the way this project looks is that it's in the fusion of, of the both in-market and out-of-market options, housing options that are in, within our urban core, because it's not something that you see, you know, and I appreciate you all digging deeper and, and, and finding a way to bring the things that encourage people to move out of our city regarding housing options within our city and not, you know, I mean, that's against the suburbs, but within the core of the urban area, and I appreciate that. You know, I too agree with Councilmember Meek about the connectivity with downtown. I mean, we have the opportunity to really engage in fluid movement throughout our city, and I think that this is pivotal. I think that the inclusion of, of, of local business establishments also would allow people to live and work within the same area, so I appreciate that attention as well. I look forward to the development and, and seeing where you go with this. I, I challenge you, don't ever limit yourself, because I think we've got something that we can all, we can all blossom and grow for. And way to go, Hector, because this is, this is gonna look, this is a good fit.
Thank you, Councilmember, and I, I appreciate your comment about really making a push for local businesses. You know, we, we, one of the things we looked at on this project was really the example of Union Hall and how it truly incubated so much of a diversity of, of businesses to be, you know, to be at sizes and price points that are accessible to so many different entrepreneurs. And so we really tried to bring some of that flavor to this site plan as well. Thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you all. Are there any other questions from council or comments? Looks like everybody is muted. Sarah, again, thank you to you and Shane and Cody and the whole team. We, we are excited to be working with you all, glad to have a great local development so much for downtown, and glad that you brought in some, some outside expertise as well. So thank you all for, for making this presentation today, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I think we're marginal on enough time for the, for the next work session item. If it's okay with y'all, I think we would, we would like to end the work session now and give additional time for executive session, if that's, if that's okay.
Sure, that's, that's fine, that's fine. Is that, is council okay with that? All right, very good. All right, are there any requests for future agenda items? Seeing none, we will now recess the work session and reconvene regular session for executive session as read into the second, into the record by the Assistant City Secretary at 4:38 PM.
Notice is hereby given that the city council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. One, real property, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551072. Two, economic development, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551087. Three, personnel, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551074. City Manager Wiley Stilham III. The council is now in executive session at 4:39 PM.